Hello, everyone. Uh, we're gonna call the Thursday, June 2nd work session of Borough Council to order. Ms. Bryant, will you call it all?
Absolutely. Council President Fred Bush.
Here.
Council Vice President Michelle Panopoulos.
Here.
Councilmember Barbara Fortner.
Here.
Councilmember Rob McGee.
Here.
Councilmember Cindy Ricker.
Here.
Councilmember Bob Weisberg.
I'm present by Zoom.
Councilmember Ira Winston.
Here.
Mayor Andrea Deutsch.
Here.
All right. Uh, my comments are that for the time being, we have moved our council meetings into this large room at Borough Hall in order to, uh, take advantage of the nice big windows behind us and also to allow more spacing should, uh, members of the public be here in greater numbers. So this will be the case for the next several meetings. I think we'll announce if we're gonna go back to the, uh, to the smaller room. But for now, the meetings of Borough Council will be in the, in the large room. That is it for my comments. Uh, Ms. Mayor?
Oh, sorry. Order, um, uh, we need to, uh, be skip item three.
Skip item three. I've done this before. All right. Let's go to consider, sorry. Andrea, one second. Let's stay in the proper order. Uh, consideration of any changes or additions to the agenda. Uh, so I will propose that we make a change to the agenda, uh, that we create item 5A, which would be a discussion of, uh, the public art projects that, uh, we had discussed earlier, this photographic art project.
So before public comment?
It'll be before public comment because the public, that'll give the public a chance to respond to it, um, should they wish during public comment.
Do you need a motion in a second?
Uh, I will need a motion in a second.
I move to amend the agenda to add item 5A, discussion of public art project.
Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Any discussion? Uh, all those in favor of amending the agenda to add 5A, discussion of public art project, please raise your hands. All right. I see a hand, okay, yes, great. Thank you, everyone. Uh, are there any other changes or additions to the agenda? Okay. Now, I have made my president's comments. Uh, Mayor Deutsch, do you have any comments tonight?
I do. Um, I just, I wanted to let, uh, the public know that last week, we had a couple, uh, thefts of wallets in the downtown businesses, business area, um, and the police are, uh, investigating it and trying to find out what they can. Uh, I would just remind people to, when you're, when you're shopping, uh, anywhere, but including, including Narberth, you know, know where your wallet is, know where your phones are, know where your valuables are, um, and, uh, just, uh, don't, don't leave them and walk away and, and presume that, uh, that no one will ever touch anything. So just be aware of your surroundings and, and make smart decisions with your wallet. Um, likewise, uh, when you park your car, you should, you should lock your car, you should take your keys, uh, don't leave unlocked cars with, uh, keys in them. This is an announcement I make a few times a year, um, and yet some folks insist on doing that and it's really, uh, it's an invitation for someone who's up to, uh, perhaps some no good, uh, to, to take advantage of. And let's just not make ourselves an easy target. Um, next on the list, I just wanna thank, uh, John Nordy and the Legion for putting together a wonderful Memorial Day parade. It was really a lovely day, followed by a moving ceremony, and I wanna thank him and, and all the veterans for their efforts in creating, in creating this special day. Uh, and that's it.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Deutsch. Okay. So let us move on to item 5A, which will be, uh, discussion of the public art project. Um, so we have Scott Lewis here. Uh, Cindy, do you wanna speak a little before, uh, this?
Sure. Uh, Mr. Lewis, you probably have seen Scott around town with his camera over the years, uh, and is publishing a fabulous photo documentary. Book on our great little town, um, and he contacted me some months ago with this really great idea that as we see so much change, kind of the reemergence of Narberth in our pandemic recovery-ish, I guess it feels like, um, it was really the perfect time with the resurgence of events to celebrate just art history in town. And Scott suggested, kind of in the, um, spirit of the most mural arts in Philadelphia, where significant events, um, are, are demonstrated as public art across the city, a version of that for Narberth. So he brought this proposal to us a couple of months ago. Um, he worked closely with Todd Bressi to curate specific, uh, photos and quotes and places in the borough, and he's here with that proposal now to share with us all. Is that about it?
Yeah. That's good.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Lewis, why don't you come over? I think we have your proposal up on the slides. Well, this is our, our microphone and camera over here, so.
Yeah, so maybe if you can come, like, you're in front of that table there, like, in front of that little sign. Yeah, Cindy, it's taking Scott.
Sure. Um, yeah, so Cindy said, this is a project I've worked on off and on for about three years, kind of quietly, person by person, space by space. You can click through. Just out of my own curiosity. And what I put together with Todd is a selection of 20 images out of about 60 that are about, between half of them are scenes, the other half are portraits, where I talk to people about what made Narberth stand out. Why is it special? Why is it distinct from its closest neighbors? So the idea is to present the images around three specific areas. One is sort of the library playground area, the fence is there, the, um, basketball court, tennis courts area as well, and then, um, in downtown. So it would be a combination of being on sides of buildings, being in windows, oh, and then also Borough Hall, um, is another option, uh, for locations. So the idea is to create a narrative, a story about Narberth in, it's not the story, it's a story, and it's a dialogue of people kind of talking to each other through the images and through their words. Uh, so this first selection are images that I have a, a vision going along the fence by the library, right on Windsor, uh, plotting out, you know, not gonna be like every, um, I don't know what those are called, um, fences, every block of fencing between the posts, but just to kind of spread it out a little bit, um, as a collection of images there. And then this next selection was just to see them just a little bit closer up, since they were pretty small on that. I feel like this is a group where I don't have to explain what we're seeing.
Yeah.
It's so often I show this and I'm like, oh, this is this, and I'm like, I don't have to explain any of that here. So one of the things we liked about this pairing is it's, it's a use of the park in two very different ways. One is obviously July 4th, and the other is something that happened during the pandemic, which was yoga at the little mini basketball court. Uh, so this was, you know, thought of in that space, sort of have those images there. Um, these horizontal scenes that are, don't have sort of the, oh, the commentary that portraits do, but they just sort of stand on their own. Invisiting this, and I've talked to, um, uh, Tim Rubin about his properties and the, um, fencing, and so I was envisioning this. This is the last day of Ricklins on the left, right after Jen had locked the door and he came out and there was a crowd of people there, and then this is obviously what we're seeing today with this question of what comes next, um, how, how are we doing? But the painting, those images on the fencing itself.
So picture of the fence on the fence?
Yes. A little meta.
Wow, you're very meta.
And so this is kind of where you just get into how the images play off of each other. The next effort is next week is to knock on some doors, talk to some business owners about, you know, being willing to have a picture in their shop or, you know, it would be on the, in the front windows so that there's a dialogue from the street as opposed to deeper into someone's door, um, or on the side of a building, um, just throughout town. And some of the texts may get edited a little bit based on space, but working with a designer on that next week, so this should all be resolved a week from now. And, you know, the pairings are not going to necessarily be literally next to each other, but they'd be sort of proximate in a sense so that there's this dynamic between the images, um, as well. So this is, again, a idea, an idea of what this could look like. Be some, you know, fine tuning as sort of get closer to literally sitting on the street with the images and thinking about the narrative that comes out through which images and what space. Was it necessarily planned that Fred Hansel would be on the Borough Hall? For those who may not know, Fred would be 28 years, I think, in this building, um, but it just kind of worked out that way.
Jim's beard.
Meta.
Again, just sort of proposed ideas, you know, I've gotten approval for the buildings here, but obviously might need to talk with shop owners about their buy-in on it as well.
We gotta put Jim near a tree. I don't think we can, uh, so ideally, it'd be nice if there were a, a tree planted in front of that, in front of that photo.
Right. Or the absence of a tree.
Yeah, absolutely. I like kind of the bare tree suit. Yeah. And these are the conversations that I guess people will have on the street.
There you go, right. There you go. See, it's already working.
I assume you have releases.
Every single person who's in the portraits has said yes, who's identifiable in any picture has said yes, yes, along with seeing their words with the image, like full-fledged.
Yeah, 'cause there's one thing to have a picture, there's another thing to be on the side of a building.
And there's another thing to have your words with your picture on the side of a building. Yeah, no, absolutely. And there was a little bit of editing. Some people were like, well, we fixed the grammar, 'cause we were talking, and some fine tuning did go on, but yes, everyone's signed off on it.
So in this example here, we don't see the words.
Correct.
But you're saying that, that there would be itself.
Correct. So that's kind of where the design part will come in next, based on, 'cause if I put it up on the bottom, it's not gonna work well, 'cause it'll be a foot now off the ground. So we're with a designer on typography treatment, and it probably would be sort of along the left side of the image and say, um.
But it'll be on the canvas.
Yes.
It won't be like a separate.
Correct. Correct. It'll be a single canvas where the text could be on the left side, let's say, or the right side of the image, a single, a single thing mounted.
But some of the pictures won't have text, 'cause some of the ones you showed us don't.
The horizontal ones, correct. And if they do, it's like two words.
Okay.
And, and that might be integrated into the image itself.
Well, I mean, this might be a little bit like technical, but like, have you heard that how you're mounting these?
Yes.
If you got that.
Yep.
I don't need to hear the details.
Yep. Went through several options.
And not the belay with this, but it was Todd and I were on the same train the other day.
Yeah.
And he was talking about how you curate the different photos and how it's really meant to stop and have that conversational piece, like we just were about the tree, and how the images really did spark conversation, and it was, it really pointed out what I don't know about public art, actually, and just made me even more excited about this. So thank, I think it's great timing, right before we start this flood of events for the boroughs.
All right. And then, uh, thank you. And it is exciting, like, I hope things happen as a result of putting it out there, but, you know, right there, when you're saying, there should be a tree here, that's evidence that it, that, that, that works right there.
And I guess the thinking is to just sort of put them all up at once, or?
Yeah.
Stages or?
No, 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 it all go up at once. I mean, in the, over the course of a day or two. Yeah. And there were some other possible scenarios that Todd was proposing that I haven't gotten to yet, of, you know, doing a talk and, you know, having an evening maybe where we project the entire body of work, uh, which are 60 images. That would be a little more complicated, but easily done at some point, uh, 'cause the other discussion, other point would be how long will these be up for? I feel like it's a balance between making it worth a while to do it and wearing it out of trouble. So if we're talking about the 1st of July, the first week, I would feel at least end of September makes sense, but.
But what's your sense of how long they would actually, like, last if they were?
You know, problem. They would last, yeah, I've already addressed that question as well, yeah. 'Cause they'd be on vinyl prints, like any vinyl banner you see, and they'd be, no problem to withstand weather.
Yeah.
Sorry.
No, it's funny. Yeah. It is everything for sure. Yeah. And, um, you had discussed having the partner with the cycling club and maybe doing a cycling club and that with that.
Depending on how interesting the route gets, but sure, I'm up for, up for doing that with Kim for sure, and I could even do like a, a tour of it, a bike tour of it, like, talk, talk through it and have people read the pictures.
I know one thing I'd asked initially, I mean, I'd ask if there's any possibility of putting any on the south side, uh, is that still a possibility to consider? If you have a apartment building on the north side, have a little, you know, middle state on the side, but, you know, we always feel left out, like, no parades come over there, it's like we don't exist. It might be nice to see if, if there's a place. I mean, I know, there's not, this is, but they're on.
The bridge could definitely be the place, yes.
No, I'm talking on the, okay, it's not your yard, we should use. My yard, I've got room in my house. You can do it in my house.
Yeah, the challenge, of course, is traffic, good traffic, you know, as well as on what.
I know. The bridge is a good idea, though. The bridge is, yeah.
The bridge is definitely something. As far as approval for that, would that be, I don't know how complicated it gets.
You're looking at.
Okay.
Right?
Approval for it? I'm not sure we would ask.
Now, uh, Mia, would we ask for forgiveness, not permission?
Okay. Sounds gonna make me mention that word with my soul.
It may, it may have to be.
I guess, is the train station sort of up on it or not? 'Cause that's a south side public space.
Then I think you need to ask for permission.
Now, that's a little different.
They're more likely to, they're more likely to.
The tunnel, the garden, the tunnel, yeah, or the garden, right?
The tunnel is Septus' property.
Yeah.
It's all Septus' property.
We have permission, we did get permission to put the scouting here, can't be impossible.
Kind of keep that simple.
Seriously. Sorry.
Why don't you think about it?
Yeah. You know, to rehash our previous conversation on this, I do remember a discussion of, of Borough Administration not having to do too much with it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
I think we shouldn't plan on being able to get permission from Septus.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Agreed. Michelle's Friday, this.
And then in terms, in terms of time, I think, you know, I think that the idea of keeping it through September makes sense right now.
Yeah.
If it's a big hit or something and people wanna keep it for longer, uh, you know, we can consider that.
Correct.
For now, let's, let's think September. Um, what are the current costs looking like?
Well, that'll be dictated a bit by the specific sizing and whether everything's done on the same material or not, but probably at, at least half, not less than half, what I was originally thinking, because it, 20 pictures versus almost 40.
Okay. So we originally, I think we originally allocated $4,000.
$4,000, yeah.
I don't think it'll be anywhere near that.
Okay.
And the mounting, to your question, is relatively simple, just a concrete anchor into the wall of a washer, done.
And of course, the.
Clalking when it's done.
And the building owners have already, like, approved that.
Uh, some, yes.
Well, they will before you do.
Right. Oh, yeah, I'm not, I'm not putting the whole name of the law. Yeah.
All right. Are there any other concerns from council? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right. Let's move on to public comment. Uh, so there is currently, well, Scott and Jim, I assume you do not have public comment for us. All right. So we'll move on to online public comment. Samantha, if you can.
Sure. So I think, um, everyone pretty much knows the drill by now, but just, you know, for everyone's sake, um, either please use RayScan function on Zoom or literally raise your hand and I will call on you, and you're welcome to make your, uh, public comment. Uh, Carol Marie Scanlon.
Good evening. Before I start public comment, I'd like to again ask council to, uh, speak louder. It's very difficult to hear, especially in the larger room with the microphone farther away, wearing a mask. Uh, most of the presentation of the gentleman was very muffled and, uh, your responses we could not hear. So that's a request that I have. Um, as far as my public comment, I wanna talk about, uh, math, and my question's with 201, um, how much actually does that building bring in gross and net? And then, how much does it cost to, a year to run it, upkeep, maintain? Because Bob Weisberg said after the last meeting, he grabbed myself and my neighbor and said that there must be income from the property. Uh, Michelle Panopoulos says, uh, at a last meeting, we must realize replacement income from the building on the property. So that leads to the question is how much do you expect? And how are you going to achieve that? And additionally, Bob was saying, oh, taxes will go up a lot, but actually, how much would taxes go up? Uh, for example, if there's about 1,500 households in Narberth, if the actual building brings in $250,000, that's less than $200 a household. And it leads again to the question of public engagement meetings, specifically asking the public their thoughts to the benefit of having a full community park on Sabine versus more development, increased density, for a nominal increase in taxes. The other question is what other budget items can offset the potential tax increase? But then on the other hand, if the building costs more than it has been stay, as it has been stated in the long run, having a park corner to corner is feasible, because if the property's a loss, it would save taxpayers money. You've said multiple times that the building isn't feasible. Well, if it costs more, if we're paying money to maintain this building, then we should have a park from corner to corner. Um, before this council can move forward, the really responsible thing would be to have public engagement meetings with the residents of Narberth to see what the people, the ones that you serve, would really like for our property. And I really think before this council goes forward, you need to have public meetings, multiple public meetings. You have said all along, there'd be public meetings, and now you, the, one of the narratives you're saying is we don't have anything to present. We do. We public do. And before you can really make a decision, before having the, uh, the Montgomery County Redevelopment Housing Authority come, we wanna know what that is. Before you have HRA, HRG, how do you know what they could do or should do until you ask the people?
Yes, Carol Marie. 30 seconds, go.
That's my comment is, is you really need to have multiple public engagement meetings.
All right. Thank you. Let me.
And again, if you could speak louder, 'cause I can barely hear you.
Carol Marie, let me direct you to the, uh, the Borough website, narberthpa.gov/information/201-Sabine-Avenue. That has all of our details about building leases, the financial reports on the building, um, basically all of the background information on 201 Sabine, including the, uh, the financials, the detailed financials are on the website. Um, and if you just search for 201 Sabine on the Borough website, it will come up.
Oh, I know, I have, and I've gotten the information, and that's why I'm asking it to be really looked at and readdressed and look at as far as the property.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Who else is listening? Public comment here tonight? Uh, Lawrence Goldberg.
Good evening. Lawrence Goldberg, 200 Sabine Avenue. At the May 19th meeting, council referred to the community survey done a couple of years ago regarding the future of 201 Sabine. This survey asked residents to indicate whether they were interested in, and I quote exactly, uh, word for word from your website, preserving the existing daycare and community nonprofit uses regardless of whether the existing building and locked configuration are changed to accommodate, end quote. That's the entire question. This statement was prioritized in third place as worded. The survey made no mention of the possibility of including dense housing in the same building as is now being proposed in option four, and no mention of how we would be paying for the cost of the daycare portion of the building. So the community was actually never asked the question about the proposed option four, which was presented later, and which is entirely different from the vague question in the survey. Of course, everyone supports children, everyone supports daycare, but that doesn't mean everyone supports dense housing development, and it doesn't mean that the community supports using revenue from housing to provide daycare. Council members should stop referring to this survey, saying that it shows any specific support for option before, because that was never presented in the survey. Dense housing development is the reason in arms and providing a put-in being in any way left to us, and yet council seems not to want to hear. The reality is the council distributed a vague and poorly crafted survey two years ago, and then only later revealed some plans that went far beyond what was asked in the survey. And yet you keep offering supposed, uh, citing supposed support for that idea from the survey that preceded it. If you really have support for using some of the precious taxpayer-owned potential green space for adding dense rental housing, why not survey the residents about that idea now? Ask whether option four with dense housing is even something residents would consider before hiring another consultant to work on an RFP for developers. There is no mandate from the community to proceed with the housing development idea. It's been made clear over and over that it's not supported by the community. You already have your answer that option four is unacceptable, but you don't seem to want to follow it. You don't need to survey, and your old survey never even asked the relevant questions. What's more, we have learned that the majority of the students at the current daycare facility are not even Narberth residents. This makes the whole idea of building a new facility and adding dense housing even more outrageous. Option four was not endorsed by the community and does not provide anything to the majority of the community.
20 seconds, Lawrence.
Is not supported by any survey and should be taken off the table. This council should represent first and foremost the interests of Narberth residents, not outside residents, organizations. There should be no consultant, no RFP, and no development on our street. We want to preserve and fully expand green space to the whole.
Thank you, Lawrence.
And we reject any attempts to impose other solutions on us. You do not have community support for development on Sabine Avenue and need to stop claiming that you do.
All right. Thank you, Lawrence. I, I do wanna point out that the, uh, the results of the public survey were presented last year. They were presented in the meeting, um, I, I see the, the report is dated January 12th, uh, 2021, so just to clarify that this was done last year, the presentation on 201 Sabine. All right. Uh, is there more public comment?
I'd like to provide public comments here. Samantha?
All right. Serena, okay, just saying, uh, that's not, you know, just for future meetings, it's not how it's done. I said it's you raise your hand and then I call on you.
I, I can't figure out the raise hand button, I'm sorry.
Well, I also said you could literally raise your hand, um, but you, go ahead, please.
Okay. Thanks. Good evening. Um, those beautiful pictures shared early on the call remind us how special, unique, desirable and valuable Narberth as a community is. But this was not because of the high density development, it's because of its historical identity and our sense of community. And our public infrastructure is vastly behind. And all of you talked about the yawning for more trees, and it's an ironic reminder on how little green space we have here. And in the case of 2, um, 201 Sabine, I believe it's time for council members to take a step back and reflect and listen more thoughtfully for the, uh, to the will of the majority of the community and focus more on the quality of life and environment. All of us, any one of us here can sell a house and, and leave, but the bigger picture here is to serve many future generations of Narberth residents. Do not allow development to squeeze out the remaining opportunities for green open space that we have left. And I get it, we, we all want more data to make sound decisions and make sure we hear each other out, but at some point, a decision needs to be made for the benefit of the majorities. Yet it appears that it, we're continuing down this long, slow march to explore options that they're not, already known, they're not acceptable to the majority of the public. And this council is considering bringing commercial and dense housing development to help pay for a private daycare business, providing care to children who are not, who are mostly non-residents of the borough. And again, nothing against daycare, our son went to the same daycare place, but it, it's just the, the vehicle is not right. We believe you should be focusing on more green space to serve the community instead of continue to spend time and taxpayer money hiring consultants, trying to figure out how to squeeze in more housing to pay for private business that might not even align with the benefit of the majority of the borough. with the benefit of the majority of the borough. And this could, could become an improper use of tax revenue, even though if the revenue comes from a developer, this is borough property, taxpayer property, and the council members should, would, do not represent any private business, and do not represent people who live outside of the borough, and do not represent the interest of the needs of a small group of borough residents that might benefit from a plan like this. Um, even though the borough has documented its own comprehensive plan and other studies, we suffer from a severe lack of green space and a deficiency of at least eighty percent versus commonly accepted, uh, standards. Take a walk around the neighborhood, talk to the residents, and review all the public comments. The message, we believe, is simple and clear.
All right, and, uh, can you give your, your name and address, Serena?
Serena Chan, two hundred Sabine.
All right, I don't see any other, uh, hands raised digitally or, uh, or physically.
All right, uh, say no more hands raised. Let's conclude public comments. Okay, next item up for business are, um, presentation and discussion items. Item seven A, streeteries.
Okay, well, yeah, I mean, I don't, I have not seen anything from you, so.
Yeah, so, um, I have some, uh, so just mildly disappointing news on that, as I was expecting from our, um, code team, uh, the actual, you know, mock-up of it that council had asked for last month. However, I have not received it as of this evening, so I'll get back to them tomorrow and find out what is going on with that. Um, I did talk with the Borough Solicitor and did confirm with him that to actually implement the aesthetic guidelines, Borough Council would just need to do a resolution before we actually are going to implement it. And like we said, this will be implemented for the next round of outdoor dining permits. Uh, but I mean, obviously sooner is better. So, I, uh, so I hope, um, that by the, um, you know, by your next meeting, you'll have the resolution from the, uh, so, not your next, sorry, not the June sixteenth meeting. At the July twenty-first meeting, you'll absolutely have the resolution from the Solicitor. And then if I can get by the June sixteenth meeting, the mock-up of the, um, of the, uh, safety barrier we talked about, uh, I'll definitely, you know, plan to present that there.
I have a question. Uh, in addition to adding a mock-up there, are they going to be presenting, are they going to be costing this out?
Yes.
Okay, uh, look forward to hearing more, uh, at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Next item is, uh, seven B, Borough Intern. Go ahead, Serena. Or do you want to go ahead? I mean-
Well, I mean, Michelle Carroll, uh, had crafted an internship description, actually reached out to see if she could identify where to, um, perhaps publish that in local colleges or even maybe some kind of high achieving-
Speakable, send it.
High achieving, um, high school students or local college students, um, the office was going to post and see if they could hire someone. Council would need to approve this concept, and we said we would talk about that at this meeting. But perhaps Samantha can give us an update on where the application process is.
Yeah, so, well, we went ahead and started the application process. However, um, I do need Borough Council to formally approve, create a certain position and allocation of funds for it. Um, but we did go ahead and start the advertisement. If council doesn't want to do it, I mean, we haven't offered a position to anyone or anything like that. So tonight, I wanted to make sure that the majority of Borough Council was on board with, um, the proposal from Michelle Carroll, uh, to bring on an intern. Uh, I had talked to F and A about a budget request of forty-eight hundred dollars in salary for the intern. It'll be twenty dollars an hour, twenty hours a week, twelve weeks, forty-eight hundred dollars in total. Um, Michelle doesn't have this on her memo, but I talked to, Michelle Carroll doesn't have this on her memo, but I still feel her a bit bored about it, and she did confirm the main task that she would envision the intern, uh, helping her, what, an intern would report to her, um, would be, uh, revamping the Borough website. I know that's something I've talked often on with some members of, uh, council about, and, um, you know, it's something that, you know, that Michelle and I both thought an intern could be a real, um, asset, that helping us move forward. Um, so that's the proposal. I'm happy to answer any questions council has. F and A did, uh, talked about it as well, and if, um, if the majority of council is in favor of it, then, you know, Michelle and I will then move forward with, um, with interviews for the position. And then at your June sixteenth meeting, would have an actual, if we have a good candidate, would have someone for you to consider hiring.
Okay.
F and A unanimously supported it. I thought this was a really great and extremely affordable way to get updates on our work here.
I have a question, let me say, oh, I'm sorry, pardon.
I, I was just going to say, the only comment that I had when we saw this at F and A, and I still have, is I think when we are going out there trying to get applicants, we should be saying, we want you to do some website redesign, because I think that's going to draw in different people than what this current description is. So I, I think that maybe could be tailored a little more to get what you're really looking for.
Yeah, I'm just following, I was curious, because what revamping website is, um, it's not, it's not terribly descriptive. Are we talking about a website redesign, so you would, you would do that offline and then, you know, just, you know, approve that, and then it would be a whole, or, or taking the existing website and reorganizing it and making it portable and better? These are two very different things. And website redesign is a really significant project, and to do it well takes a, a lot of knowledge and a lot of time. So I should make sure that we really do make sure we get that person to keep doing that.
It would be, it would be the former.
Okay. Yeah, that would be great. Exciting.
Okay. Yeah, I agree that if that's the main thing we're, we're planning to bring them in for, it should be very clear on the, uh, description. And we're going to be looking, you know, not just at, say, poly-sci majors, but, you know, somebody with actual computer skills. It's a different, different group of people.
Design skills, too.
Yeah. Okay. All right, uh, seems like, uh, council approves of these. Do you want a formal, uh, vote here? I mean, I see what you want.
No, what we'll do is, Michelle, um, and I will update the, I'm sorry, I didn't incorporate that before for the, uh, part of your packet here, Barbara. Um, I'll let Michelle Carroll update the job description that explicitly mentioned, uh, web design, uh, revamp, redesign project, and we'll, uh, and then, like I said, we'll probably, you know, it depends on how the applications and interviews and such go, uh, but as early as, you know, June sixteen, we'll come back to council, and then we'll need a formal, um, vote for the budget expense, the job description, and actually, you know, hiring someone to do that.
All right. Excuse me. Let's move on then to item seven C, which is, uh, skate park grant of opening. Who wants to lead this?
Samantha, do you want to do this, or have me do it?
Yeah, I'll, um, I'll start, and then maybe you can, uh, update on the, um, marketing discussion you had. Um, so include your packet, let's a memo, um, building off task memos about where we're at with the skate park. Um, we have, um, moved the schedule of opening date from June third to June tenth. Um, that's because it won't be until tomorrow that our, um, inspector from our liability insurance will be out here to look at the skate park. Uh, speaking with him, um, and his review of all the written materials that we submitted, um, he, you know, he felt very confident that we had done what we needed to do in terms of safety and, uh, and liability control. Um, but he'll be out here in person, uh, tomorrow to actually see it in person and do his inspection, and assuming all that goes well, um, we're now looking at an opening date of June tenth. Um, you know, Public Works, uh, I didn't have a chance to chat with, uh, our Public Works manager right before the meeting, but when I spoke to him yesterday, he told me Public Works was on track to, um, have the work they need to have done by the, um, you know, by the end of, by tomorrow morning. So I think, um, I think that's moving along. And, um, the other thing with the skate park, I wanted to bring the council's attention, is in discussion with staff and officials since our last meeting, uh, there was an idea raised that maybe for an extra, uh, layer of security, um, we should ensure that we have, uh, security camera coverage of the skate park area, just like how we have for the rest of the back parking lot and the, um, dumpster and, and the back of, um, of AD Windsor. Um, so that's something I asked, uh, Public Works to look into, because they installed the cameras we currently have back there. And part of our, um, building improvement plan that, uh, council approved, that infrastructure is working with me on, I just call for a more permanent, more sophisticated camera system around the entire exterior of the, um, of the building. Uh, but I just think for the skate park, um, it might be a pretty good idea.
To, I knew when we talked about the possibility of having someone monitoring the skate park, the challenge with that is that increased our liability. Because like, if we're watching it, and something goes wrong, and so it's on us, does this camera fall into that category, or this is after the fact, so it wouldn't-
Right, exactly. Um, no, the, the purpose of, again, the camera is after the fact, it's, we wouldn't be watching it in real time necessarily, it would be, if an incident occurs, then they would go back and look at what happened and, you know, do, you know, and then the police could do what they need to do with that information.
But, I mean, but we don't, for example, I'm trying to destroy the distinction between why we would have it there, but say not on the basketball court or the baseball field or something like that, you know, what, why the skate park and not the others?
Yeah.
Those are the distinctions you drew, we drew last time.
Yeah, so, um, well, sorry, what's last time?
Well, we were just, when we were discussing this idea of monitoring, but we don't monitor anything else. So I'm just saying, why is there a distinction between the skate park and the other parts of the parks?
Because Walco specifically said this is like any other playground.
Right, so-
Well, no, no, sorry, let me, let me answer to you. Sorry, let me speak to that. So, um, I mean, I guess what I would say is the permanent camera system we're looking at, you know, that we have put a deposit down on and all that, that we talked about in infrastructure, is more like, if man would, again, it'd be around the entire exterior of the area, and so it would see the skate park, it would see, you know, the immediate descending of the Borough building, uh, the basketball court and the skate park.
Okay, fine.
It's just because this is like, the skate park pilot is new, and this is a, you know, and just because we won't have those cameras in until after the skate park pilot opens. But eventually, the goal is just to have that coverage.
Okay, okay, let me, let me ask a, a slight variance on that question. It would only, I, I think it would only be used in case of an incident. It wouldn't be used for us to like-
That's-
Analyze and determine how the skate park is used or anything like that.
Right.
Because I, I just think there's sort of an expectation, whenever you have like closed-circuit TV systems, you want to like-
Well, I, I feel a little bit uncomfortable answering, like, I want to make sure I don't get an inaccurate answer to these questions, so maybe it's something we could talk more about later when I can research it, if there are, if still questions are.
That's fine, I, I just, I just want to make sure that we, that whatever the expectations are for how this camera, or what, how this footage is used or currently laid out.
Yeah.
Whatever we decide they are, I just, I think it should be clear what they are.
Have, have we run, so I do share the concern about liability, I mean, have we run it by Walco, this idea, to make sure he doesn't?
Um, no, I haven't run it by the Borough Solicitor, because it's something that plenty of other boroughs and towns do. It's something we've been doing for the back parking lot for the past-
Okay.
Uh, year almost now.
Me, maybe, maybe I'm overstating it, I just, I just have a, a, I just get, my background is, we're always very careful about having these policies out there about how the, the footage can be used.
Can I ask a question more to Ira, to clarify? So I think your question, that like you're saying, like, if we are surveying, if we're, if we're instituting surveillance of people versus property, we ought to be really clear on how that is used. Is it just for the skate park? Do we need to let people know that they are in fact being, there is surveillance on the basketball court and the skate park as part of a larger policy? And we need to understand, what is that that triggered that for us?
You and I both know from our day jobs that our, in, our, our universities have policies about how this footage could be used.
Because it could be a slipper.
Right, that's the one thing.
So, when would, are you saying that this would be in place as part of a larger project, and it would take a few months for it to be in place, Samantha, or is, I'm not sure I fully understand?
All right, so, if you read my room, um, okay, so, infrastructure, council already approved a camera system for the entire exterior of the building.
Okay.
But, and-
Six months ago?
Yeah. And the follow process here is that because the pilot is new, and because we, we are going to have, I mean, we are going to have a permanent system, this is a temporary stopgap, just, you know, just because the skate park pilot is a new thing, and it was like, more just like a nice-to-do sort of idea, um, and again, like, I just, I don't want to, I don't know, I'm really, I would be really, I feel like I've been a little too blue-slept already in this conversation, and I feel like, I feel like if council has these concerns, uh, I need an opportunity to research them, because I don't want something quoted back in my face that was said in an effort to try and answer a question on the spot.
That's totally fine. I, I just was raising the concern that there are, that these systems tend to generate privacy concerns. And, and so I just, I would, it's just good if we have some sense of what, what the rules are.
Yeah, I mean, all, all it said in the packet was that you, you were looking into the feasibility of a remote camera, so there weren't really details-
Sorry, yeah. Sorry, I, I misremembered what I, whatever.
It's okay, I mean, because I, I was just checking, because I wasn't sure. So let's, should we just discuss this again, you know, later on? Because it's not imminent, right? This is something that's medium term.
Um, I mean, I'll, yeah, I'll look more into it in the next two weeks, but I, I think this is really important. And if I can bring this back up to council at June sixteen, once I had a chance to address the concern raised.
Okay, Barbara.
So, I believe, I'm not a hundred percent sure, because I can't always remember everything that has happened when I've been at the table, but I believe when you approved the broader camera system, that was before my time at council, doesn't, doesn't ring a bell with me, it's something that, that, um, I was part of an active decision on, but I could be wrong. Anyway, what I'm thinking of, though, is that, um, presumably, we've already thought through some of this, because that, you know, that, I would say, even the temporary ones that we've got out that are, you know, surveying the back of the library building and the, the yard, all have the same questions about what are we doing with those and what are the privacy concerns about that? So I would assume that we already thought through some of that, or if we haven't, that this should be a wider, um, process and, and the policy to set, just to make sure we're covering everything, it's not just like specific to the skate park, but, you know.
Yeah, I can look back on my notes when we talked about that time and what conversations I had with the Solicitor that-
Yeah, because I would think it's all, it's all the same piece, really, it's just-
Is it a topic to give to the police, uh?
No, I think, I think it's probably something that John-
Yeah.
Could very easily write it, and, and it's just an internal policy.
That's what I would think.
Um, it's pretty, you know, it would be pretty standard.
And as usual, other municipalities probably have policies.
Yeah, I know, it's an internal policy, this is to ensure that people with access internally don't miss who's in some recent, it's like an employment policy, essentially.
All right.
Right.
So let's, let's plan to come back to this in two weeks, with more input from, Mr. Walco. Anything more about the skate park here?
The other, um, really the other thing is, it's just really regarding around the-
Okay, so, Michelle Carroll, I cut you off.
No, I'm sorry, I just, I'm trying to say, you know, I think it's great to ask John about this. I, I have to be honest with you, I mean, I'm taking, doing a degree in privacy, hold on, I have to tell you, you don't really have an expectation of privacy in public places. You, you really don't. Um, but that said, I'd love to have an internal, you know, procedure in place, so that we feel good about our internal processes, but it's not like there's some massive security concern when you're walking across the park, and somebody takes a picture of your video, it's kind of like, you're in public. So, that's all.
I just think that people have a right to know.
I think we need to speak up, folks.
Yeah.
That's all we're saying. Okay. Moving back to, uh, skate park specifications.
Sure, so I guess sort of the other thing about data, although the lighter, um, conversation hopefully, is, um, um, you know, the conversations around the marketing and promotion of it. And I've had a data opportunity to meet since this memo was written, uh, with, uh, Harry Clay, Rebecca Clay, David Burdo, and- and our council vice president, and talked through some ideas about, you know, about, oh, I'm sorry, Cindy has also been a part of that conversation as well. Talked through some ideas for marketing and promotion of skate park. And I think there's some really exciting ideas for it. There's a flyer that I believe will be going out tomorrow that will talk a lot about the different sort of events and sort of things you want to have going on with the grand opening. We'll talk about, you know, some of this is still being finalized, but we talked about having a guest trip contest. We talked about having raffle, talked about having, you know, some food and drink for sale there. You know, so I, I don't know, I think it's going to be a really fun day and a really fun event. And I think it's just going to be a really good opportunity for the borough. And I think we're going to see a lot of really happy people there. Um, but if council has any other suggestions or any particular thoughts on marketing, feel free to, you know, throw them out there to me between, you know, now and Monday probably. And we can get that done. But otherwise, it says flyer will be going out very soon. That will market a lot of the stuff going on with those grand opening.
I think the one marketing thought I had was that if anybody has a thought of selling things there more than like once, you know, if you want to come out and have your Girl Scouts or have whatever, go out there once and sell things, that's reasonable. But we can't, you know, we don't want people to be out there all the time without us being aware of it.
I agree. The group touched on that topic very briefly today. And it's one that, that I definitely have some thoughts on and are going to have some more, more to come to Borough Council with that.
Okay, great. All right, any other discussion, anything else? So I think pending the report from the inspector, it sounds like we're good to go.
Yeah.
All right, fantastic. Let's move on to the master park plan ad hoc committee. Michelle, do you want to, no?
Um, I can start by going over the memo that I, that I provided.
Go ahead.
Um, so I tried to take the information council had discussed at its previous meeting. And then I also took the, the parking study task force sort of document that was put together before my time to like kind of get that group, you know, sorted out. And put together this, this document that you have in your packet. So I wanted to make sure that, you know, council and myself and I were on the same page about how to, you know, how to move forward with the, the master park planning process. So welcome any questions or comments or thoughts or suggestions on, on this document and the plan to move forward on this.
So I'd like to suggest that we look primarily at the, the process. I think the composition of the committee, given changes that are going on right now in Parks and Recreation Board, we may want to rethink. So I would recommend that we, we talk mostly about the, the other aspects of this proposal, like what the committee would do, rather than who would be members of the committee. Anybody have any? Any comments? Barbara.
The one thought that I had is just to make sure that we're clear what we mean when we say a plan for the parks. Because when I hear that, I think we're talking only about outdoor spaces. And maybe that is what we are talking about. But you can talk to some other people and when they think of parks, they think, oh, you know, there's a rec center in my park, or, oh, there's a, there's a, an eating pavilion, you know, or there's bathrooms, or there's, I don't know, anything like that. So I guess I just would want us to be clear in what we're asking this committee to do. Is it, is it just outdoor space? Or do we want them to, you know, think more broadly than that and have suggestions that, you know, you wouldn't necessarily say, oh, park, but something that would be in a park? That's my, was my one question to make it clear to them.
So we have a bullet point to balance active and passive recreational needs and uses. So we could also add potential need for community space to that bullet point.
Or maybe something about indoor and outdoor activities, you know, to, or to, to consider whether, I don't know, something like that, you know, to, to even, to just think about. Something like this could include indoor and outdoor space.
Well, let's just say we want to incorporate.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think we're a little bit tonight.
Everyone agrees this should be, okay, I see no answer, so.
I mean, I wouldn't put it on the bullet point list because that's, those are things the committee must do.
Right.
And so these things, but I think expanding the definition somewhere here to make sure. Make it clear, parks planning can, can also include indoor recreational facilities.
That's right.
I mean, I would, I would expect it to, but it can't hurt to.
Well, and I'm just saying, if you don't say it, they might not think of it. They may be.
Well, it's not like this committee's going to go running off.
I know, but still.
Those may allow it back and forth, but I think it's a good idea.
All right, Cindy?
So I guess my suggestion was, do we want to pause on this actually and kind of wordsmithing this and looking at it until we constitute and fill some of the, the open seats we now have on Parks and Rec? Given that we did decide we're not going to even apply for that planning grant until next year? And you will all be happy about the decision when we share Samantha's grant schedule with you all to see how part of the urban that is. I guess my suggestion is, the former Parks and Rec really kind of made this recommendation for an ad hoc position. Do we want to redevelop Parks and Rec, fill those vacant seats and then revisit this with new members and fresh eyes?
That's what Samantha just said, or we should, or Fred suggested, we were just, we were just going to focus on the descriptive part that described what the, what the master parks planning organization will do, not who it's composed of. That's something, that's something that's going to come from council, no matter who does the master parks. But it has to, just like, just like the ad hoc parking committee didn't decide its own agenda and didn't decide its own scope of work, council certainly has to give that guidance.
I look back at a part of the Parks and Rec board, it says, you know, with the recommendation to an ad hoc.
This isn't necessarily, can I just?
Michelle, Cindy's.
I was just trying.
Do we want to fill these seats? And same thing, this was the recommendation of last board. Do you still agree with that? Or is that something that includes the Parks and Rec committee?
I'm saying the opposite.
Go ahead.
I'm saying, we're not talking about filling the seats now. I'm not talking about.
Right, so the thing would be that, we were just talking about focusing on the process and deliverables part. Because that would be true whether it's an ad hoc committee, whether, whether, whether Parks and Rec, we visit this and says, you know, we thought that was a great recommendation and we still endorse that, even though we're composed of different members, so appoint the committee. Or Parks and Rec says, this is a different board and we're not so sure we do endorse that recommendation anymore for ad hoc. The process of deliverables piece would be the same. So that's why I probably suggested just focus on that piece.
Okay, I, I hear what you're saying. I'm suggesting we just pause. And, and we don't even go into looking at deliverables. But I, I would suggest perhaps we can, this doesn't have to be done right now. Maybe we can fill those seats.
No, it doesn't, but it's in the packet and Samantha's just going to ask me for feedback.
Sure.
That's my question. Would you like to pause? We have a lot going on. Would you like to pause this? I, I would feel like this is something that we could probably pause.
So I would say, I mean, the, the project schedule outlined here calls for the responsible body to really kind of start meeting, like around September or so. To really make sure they have all their, you know, ducks in a row, can really get it down to work. And, and especially if they decide they need any professional support, so they can have everything they need in place like January. And then have a full year to be able to work on it and get it approved by council before, you know, before the beginning of 2024, when, you know, when we all really have to start working on that grant application. So I would say those, I mean, I would really like to try and stick to that schedule, whether it's forming an ad hoc committee or whether it's having a reconstituted Parks and Rec committee do it, just as long as whatever body that is is ready September to get rolled around.
Okay.
And if we're going to form a new body, you know, I mean, we've all been at this table long enough now to know that it's June. But like by the time we advertise and pick people and figure that out, it's not going to be, it's going to be pretty close to September, I'm looking. Or vice versa, by the time, you know, for Parks and Rec, by the time we accept these reservations and advertise and fill and reorganize.
All right, so realistically, I think, sorry, go ahead. Well, I, I'm also a bit concerned about the workload, you know, I mean, we have the parking committee, which is going to go on for the foreseeable future. We have two council members, but one of us, yeah, we're like running out of council members to staff these committees. We have someone on the town square committee from council. You know, so I'm just a bit concerned about the workload for the council, but also for the staff.
Okay, so I mean, what I was saying was Parks and Rec is going to take some time to get organized again, to, to be able to, you know, have a, a recommendation from the new committee. I mean, that's probably August, right? We want to have the whole, we want to have a new, you know.
Yeah.
So if we have their recommendation in August and we sort of finalize this, then we're going to start in September. It's a little time. Maybe we should push this to October. Would you do that?
I mean, would we like to have Samantha in a position to apply for grants for 2024? So we have a master parks plan? Because if, I mean, is that, I mean, because I'm hearing like maybe, maybe it's just too much. Maybe we want to just scrap that and not do this master parks planning and not apply for grants in 2024. That's a different discussion. But if we do, it's just kind of the timeline, the way that Samantha sees it, it would work. So I, I think that since we have a light agenda, it's not a bad time to talk about the process and deliverables because they will, they will hold true whether there are council members on an ad hoc group or whether it's, whether the new reconstituted rec board says that they would rather, they would like to take this over and no more to apply the previous recommendation. It still seems like it can't hurt to talk about it now because Samantha provided it and asked for feedback. I don't have any feedback. I mean, I think, I think this is great. It's a nice concise description. I like your addition, Barbara. But, I mean, I wouldn't, I wouldn't feel like I need to revisit, revisit this process of deliverables. I'd feel comfortable saying, whatever happens procedurally with the composition of order appointments, I'm comfortable with the process of deliverables as you put them in this draft.
Yeah, I think that's really, I mean, the premise of the question is, is when do we want to be able to do improvements at the park? And do we want grant funding for those improvements? You know, it could be the plan, you know, doesn't get done, it could be something where, you know, the plan doesn't get done until later in 2024 and, you know, we go ahead and start some smaller work or something like that as far as, you know, the regular budget and then apply, you know, for grant funding at the beginning of 2025. It's, I mean, it's really just, I mean, a question of how, how soon you want to do it. Like, like I, I feel okay being able to apply for that, you know, grant in the beginning of 2024. I mean, I just went through a master park plan like, you know, not even like two years ago. So I mean, the process is still kind of fresh in my mind. And I'd like to think I have a big idea of what it's going to take and involve. And I think part of the reason too of recommending that this not really be going until like the fall is the town square project, the heavy design component of that. You know, because I think almost everyone here got to attend the meeting on the 3rd with Simone Collins will be kind of, you know, will be winding down by that point. So I mean, maybe instead of starting goal that we wouldn't start this until, you know, the town square, you know, design work is done. And that, you know, our, our primary goal would be to be in a position to apply for a decent, you know, park development plan by April 2024. But if we don't, if we don't meet that goal, then we won't, you know, we won't, we won't be able to work. We'll like, we'll go ahead and start improving what we can improve at the park. And, you know, when the grant comes around again, we'll apply for it after.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I, I think park improvements are, are a priority for the borough. I mean, you know, there's, they're a priority. So it's important to, to get our ducks in a row and get ready to put ourselves in a position to get grant funding for them. I think that, that the heavy lift is really going to be next year when they're working on the plan, rather than sort of figuring out logistics, which is probably less challenging than actually, you know, talking to all the stakeholders.
And the biggest thing I need the group to do, in my opinion, and the prior to the end of the year, is just let me know what sort of budget requests they would have for any professional support in 2023. And then in 2023, the actual work would happen. And, you know, depending on how much professional support you decide you want. You know, all admit, when I did the one in New Brent, there was a considerable amount of external professional support. And really the meetings there were, you know, like the, the steering committee didn't actually like really write any of the actual plan or anything like that. It was, you know, there was a meeting every two weeks or so between the steering committee and the, and the, you know, professional support team to kind of check on how things were going, review drafts, provide suggestions. And there were a handful of big, you know, town hall style public meetings. But again, it was the steering committee intended and helped here and there with it. But largely the professional design team organized that. And then again, with the stakeholder, there were stakeholder interviews kind of similar to what we're doing with Town Square. Again, it was the professional support team who, who made the questions and actually did the interviews. And the steering committee just helped create the questions and, and, you know, sat in on, on the interviews. So I hope people don't think of it as the level of involvement. And to give a lot of credit to the parking committee, it's like the parking committee, it's been like 100%. You know, thankfully we have Nelson Nygaard to rely on and that past work, that was already done. But in terms of, of, you know, having to really actually do things with that information, you know, the parking committee has had to do all of that. So I would say the commitment level would probably be less than what the parking committee is, is doing right now. And probably more than, than, you know, than what we're doing with the town square. Because the town square is just one location versus our whole park system.
So to answer your concerns, Rob?
Yeah.
So I think, you know, Barbara's made that point about the, you know, the possible inside uses of the park, possible buildings at the park to be included in the, the charge to the committee. Is, is everyone comfortable with waiting to determine the makeup of the committee until we have a conversation with the new Parks and Rec board?
As long as we're comfortable with the charge, that makes sense to me. Because the new Parks and Rec board won't know whether they can agree to it or not if they don't know what the charge is.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Some sense of the.
All right, so let's, let's plan to return to this either July or August, once we've had a chance to, since we've got a, a recreation, a Parks and Recreation Board that is, once again, ready to discuss this issue. Okay. Any other comments about the master park plan? Well, let's go ahead with the commercial fire inspection fees.
Yeah, just, just a word of thanks to Samantha for bringing this project home that's been in the works for a while. And it's a real benefit to the community, you know, just to make sure these buildings are safe, so.
Yeah. Yeah, I was actually kind of embarrassed to realize that I never actually brought this to full council until now. Because it actually will, that public health and safety really kind of worked through this concern. So big picture, in Norbert Borough, there currently is no commercial fire inspection program. It's a relatively common thing in other municipalities. And in fact, our existing fire code gives us the ability to do these commercial fire inspections. So it doesn't require any ordinances or anything, anything like that from Borough Council. It's just the main thing I want to make sure was, A, that Borough Council was aware. It's just the main thing I wanted to make sure was A, that Borough Council was aware that, you know, that we're thinking of doing this and B, you know, the other common component is there is usually some sort of fee charge. And, you know, Public Health and Safety had a good discussion on, you know, how we should handle that. And so I wanted to bring it up to Borough Council before we, because we're in a position really to start doing it. If we want to, before we start doing it, I want to see how Council felt about any fees and about the program in general before we get going on it.
So my usual question is, do we know what lower Marion charges for fire inspection fees?
Uh, let's see here, I do know offhand, but then I could find out relatively quickly. I know, I mean, it's not exactly a fair comparison. I mean, my last job, it was done based on square footage, whereas this is a flat rate fee. And the square footage cost range, anywhere from a hundred dollars to a thousand dollars. But something that would be like a thousand dollars was like the shopping center, for example. Like, the vast majority of businesses were like a hundred dollars, two hundred dollars kind of thing. Yeah, we ended up proposing a flat fee just because most businesses in Norbert are, you know, there aren't, as far as I'm, I've only been here all over a year, but I don't know of any giant shopping centers in Norbert. Most of our businesses seem to kind of be the same sort of square footage. I actually, I remember, I remember when, when we updated our fee schedule at the end of last year, that me and our code enforcement officer, Kevin, and my assistant, Michelle, had looked at the fees in Lower Marion and some other places, thinking with that for fire as well. But I'm pulling up their website right now and checking on that.
Sorry to put you on the spot.
No, 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 that's a very fair question. And it's one that I can relatively quickly find the answer to, so. Yeah, I'll just say while I'm looking this up, that I'm grateful to Cindy for helping set me and the fire marshal and the code officer up with a meeting with the Norbert Business Association. And we made, you know, their membership aware of this proposed plan and handed out the self-inspection checklist and clothes and the council packet. And, you know, people seemed pretty understanding of it. We also do plan to send out a direct mailer to, you know, because not every business in the borough is at that meeting, just so everyone's aware before we start doing them. And then, of course, as we talk about other things, you know, this building would be the first building that would go through the fire inspection to make sure we're in compliance with all the fire code.
Samantha, I cannot find that easily on Lower Marion's site. Maybe you can look.
I can get an intro here.
Seriously, yeah, I've been looking all over the place. I, I wonder if we need to do this right now, though.
That's not easy, yeah.
If it's not.
It's not obvious that we're here now.
Well, and the other thing about the fees is that the fees should recoup the cost of doing inspection and the staff estimated the numbers that, on that basis. So even if Lower Marion's numbers are different, that could just be that their costs are, to do it are different.
Yeah, and that's true. I'm gonna ask Kevin to give me a P. I asked him how long do things not take you to do for an average property and average business in Norbert? How long is it gonna take you to do the fire inspection, including, you know, the time to schedule the appointment, to do the inspection, to write up the, you know, report? I think the number he came with was, make sure I quote the right number from the packet.
Two hundred.
Two hundred?
And only a three hundred if it's a bigger year.
It's not the hours.
Oh, I thought you were saying.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't think it's on the.
No, I don't, I don't see it.
I think you have the hours.
That does sound right to me, though. I do believe we have proposed $200 for annual businesses and $300 for, for businesses that are every other year. And like, things that move a fire danger, like, like restaurants would be inspected every year. Whereas like, things that aren't open to the public, like someone who has, I'm making something up here, like an accounting office or something, you know, would be every other year.
Yeah, and, you know, it's, I'm just pleased that this also includes the apartment building and the kind of areas. So you can imagine stairwells with lighting, sprinklers, this, this kind of thing.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, thanks for pointing that out.
What, what is, what's, what's the next steps on this? And I think this is a great, I mean, I think it's like long overdue. Do we need to do anything to make this happen?
So there are really just two things. Number one, I wanted to make sure there wasn't any unknown umbrage on council about it. You know, as, as we found out tonight, that's not always the case, so I like to be sure about that. And then number two was, I will need council to actually approve, formally approve a fee schedule that would incorporate fees for this program. So why don't, since this is a work session and not a business meeting, why don't I, between now and the 16th, you know, get some more information on making sure that, even though our fee is based on our costs, to make sure that we're not being, you know, us and our businesses aren't being price gouged or anything like that. And I can get that information on what it's like in some of the towns around here. And that way council will make sure that they get the right decision on the 16th of fees.
Appreciate that. Okay, sounds good.
Thanks.
Okay, that's it for our presentation discussion items. We do have one set of action items, 8A, which is to accept some resignations from the Parks and Recreation Board of members Jennifer Marinico, Jonathan Peterson, Melissa O'Connor, and Krista Stott.
Can we accept them as a block or do we require to do it individually? I haven't an idea.
I think you're probably, again, I'm not the borough solicitor, but I think you're probably trying to accept them as a block.
Okay. I'd like to, first of all, I'd like to thank the Parks and Recreation Board members for their service to the community. Is there any discussion of this?
Do you think there needs to be a motion and a second? I'm moved to accept the resignation from Parks and Rec Board of Jennifer Moriello, Jonathan Peterson, Krista Stott.
Effective immediately.
Second.
Okay, and now, is there any further discussion of this topic? Okay, the motion is to accept the resignation of the Parks and Recreation Board of Jennifer Marinico, Jonathan Peterson, Melissa O'Connor, and Krista Stott. All those in favor of accepting the resignations? Okay, opposed? All right, now the motion passes. That is our only action item. Let's go with the committee reports.
Okay, infrastructure. Do you want me to start? I'm just gonna do it. All right. I don't, there's not a lot to report. I'll just let you know, we talked about the sidewalk inspection program and I don't know if we've talked about that a lot here in council or not. We got a, our code enforcement officer did a, sort of estimate of the scope of this program and what it would entail. And found that they estimate that, based on their sort of sampling of sidewalks in borough, it's about, gonna be about 50% pass fail rate for, to meet the sidewalk standards, like if we were doing UNO inspections. And so this is gonna end up being a very, very substantial commitment of time and hours and funds. And so our manager's recommendation was to do this in a phased manner, roll this out. I don't exactly know that we have a schedule, precise schedule at this time. But the, the recommendation was to begin with the 5A downtown district and have commercial, I guess, property owners there do their sidewalk work first as a trial to see how it goes. I don't think there's anything else we need to say about that.
Sorry, honey?
Yeah, please.
I didn't want to emphasize, well, same with the fire inspection, the borough owned properties would also be some of the first inspected.
Yes.
And, I'm sorry.
No, right, I forgot about that, that's important. The borough owned properties first. But as, as far as rolling it out, past the borough properties, watch me, I'm starting my day.
Can I ask a question now? So when you evaluate the 5A district for the sidewalks, would you evaluate, would there be an evaluation of the shade tree? And I say, for an example, there was a store where there was a beautiful shade tree. The sidewalk was cracked, the business then fixed the sidewalk, but in fact did not replace one of the shade trees. So how does, how are trees incorporated in that 5A district sidewalk?
That's a good conversation we need to have with shade tree commission. So we, yeah, we're gonna loop them in.
So that's on our radar, okay.
In our new sidewalk ordinance that we did in preparation for this program, there is some language about, you know, about roots and trees and that sort of thing. But, yeah, I do think there's a separate conversation that I've been working to have with the shade tree commission about how we follow up on our tree inventory from a few years ago and, and, yeah, and do that inspection replacement work.
Right, so I guess my question was, the business doesn't have the authority to say, well, I'm not planting a tree here because it's just gonna crack my sidewalk anyway. So there's this balance of, is the right of way? So can we say, no, we are, we are requiring a shade tree, but yet you're responsible of it, fix up the sidewalk?
Yeah, that we, that's, that authority is already in the order of the shade tree. To plant it in the right way.
But we, we can't tell them you have to plant a tree. We can merely.
The borough can plant it.
Well, no, 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 we, I mean, we want, I'm not saying we should. I'm just saying, I've thought about, well, we backtrack on that, I'll be honest. But again, I don't want to say something off the cuff that could come back to haunt me later. All safe for tonight, as the borough does have the legal authority to require people to plant shade trees in the right way of their property.
Right, we did discuss that. And I'm not looking for a chance back here, or anyway, but again.
We don't have plans to do this at the moment.
No, the only plan at the moment is inspect the sidewalk.
We are not planning to, to ask people, to demand that people plant trees.
Yeah, I think we're gonna be very clear for the recording and everyone on here. There's currently no plan whatsoever to make people plant shade trees. And if there were ever such a suggestion, it would come before Borough Council, before any action we take.
I mean, we think it's a delightful idea to plant shade trees and we encourage it, but that is the extent of our current.
Since our two shade tree commission members here are present, can I ask a question? In a situation like that where you're planting in a relatively small area, like under a sidewalk, are there, are there tree varieties that you can plant that will not, that they're pretty much guaranteed to not cause damage to the sidewalks because of the way that their size and where the roots grow? I mean, or, or if you talk, if you have, if people plant trees in those, in those limited areas, like, you know, like an open area within the sidewalk, is it just inevitably going to damage the sidewalk?
Don't we recognize our shade tree member, one of our shade tree members?
In a tight situation like that, we'll typically install.
Speaker?
We would install a root barrier typically in a tight situation like that, which is like a two-foot piece of plastic that is inserted next to the curb or on the, on the side and encouraging the roots to, to tap down or spread. That's supposed to be pretty rough then.
Okay, so you can, I mean, they're, if they're pretty effective, this means you're not gonna wind up having to replace the sidewalk again within a generation or two. I mean, it's gonna be fine. Maybe if the tree gets enormous at some point, but, you know. Is that accurate or?
I'm sorry, did you?
I think that's accurate.
We, I mean, we don't, we don't know how long, but it's like, most we can do to mitigate. Yeah, like eventually the trees may cause the sidewalk to buckle, but this will limit the effect.
I think this will be a really good conversation for council, separate from the sidewalk inspection program, once I have a chance to talk more to shade tree commission about the tree inventory and our comprehensive plan and so on and so forth.
Barbara?
There was, there's another comment at the infrastructure meeting that came from a public comment, which was if some, if a, if a, if a resident sees a really badly cracked piece of sidewalk, they can report it to the borough office and that, that, that one can be inspected out of, out of cycle.
Yeah, and also, starting to get us completely off track here, this is the last kind of comment I have on this, is just because Carol Marie is on this meeting right now, I just, this is, I don't really want to expect a response. I just want to let you know that the contractor that we had doing our sidewalk work before is coming back out to do the sidewalk work that you brought to our attention, so thank you for that.
Okay.
Okay, so that was the status of the objective about sidewalks. We, Samantha briefed us on the Hampton Court streetlight pillars. You might remember, this goes back quite a ways to 2020, when a resident was concerned about damage to the pillars, or I think the, like, the mortar on them was, the masonry was damaged. I guess we agreed to take responsibility for the pillars and so it's kind of gone on and on. What we decided to do is we wanted to sort of replace them with streetlights. It's like, thank you for doing LED streetlights everywhere. As it turns out, there were some residents that weren't crazy about that, probably more to the point. Samantha's got cost estimates, so the cost to repair the masonry on the existing pillars, because I guess the electricity works, is about $7,000. The, the cost to replace them completely would be like probably north of $12,000. She thinks the life expectancy would be about the same and then on balance, it makes sense to just go for masonry repairs. The infrastructure committee said, you know, we would follow that advice and recommendation that if anybody has a contrary opinion. I brought up, and I kind of want to say it again, with the council here, I can't speak to the wisdom of deciding to take responsibility at that time, I don't know. I think now that I've sort of gone back and looked at the pillars and the wall that goes around and support, they kind of look like they're one and the same thing, native to the same materials. And I, I think I just want to make it clear that although we did take responsibility for those pillars and so we pointed out like if somebody drove a car into the pillar after it's fixed, our liability insurance would cover it because we did that work. The rest of those walls and that other masonry, it's really not our responsibility. And I'm fairly certain that's part of it, the property was put in by the developer who created Hampton Court. So I just wanna kind of say that publicly, yes.
So I was actually against taking responsibility for the lights outside of the standard streetlights. I've obviously outvoted on that because one of the points I said then, okay, so we're signing on now for maintaining every private street or lanes.
No, we're not.
Well, if Land Twin Lane comes and says, hey, I heard you did this for Hampton Court, we want our pillars re-mortar, then, is that, I mean, is that what we're gonna do? And everybody said, yeah, that's what we're gonna do. I think that's a bad precedent. I think that's a bad precedent, but I suppose that chipped the sale. So. All right, okay.
So you had a question.
I don't, I don't think we are therefore committed to take responsibility for private property every, every, every time it comes up. As a result of making one discrete decision in one particular.
So do you think, you know, there's my question, this Hampton Court, we are not in perpetuity going to maintain this? That this was a, a kind of a one-time, you came to us.
That's not a, that's not a true council agreement to.
Yeah, we've actually like taken possession of them, as I understand. Like, there was some legal agreements that were signed, so they're, they're ours now.
But not, not the rest of it, just the street.
Just the street.
I mean, I think I've settled my foot in my mouth like four times already. And I, I want to make it five, I'll say Cindy, I mean, I don't have a vote. I agree with everything that you just said about the situation.
Yeah.
All right, I'll take some ownership here. I was in charge of infrastructure when the case was made that, you know, that we should take charge of it. Basically, the lights went out and there was a lot of concern about the lights going dark. And, you know, so we decided that streetlights are a public, the borough should take charge, or the borough should take charge of these streetlights. And as a result, we voted to do so and we've made some legal accommodations to ensure that we actually do. So in this case, we own the streetlights and we need to make, you know, we need to decide what to do with them.
Right, because it is, the streetlights are an important, like, public safety measure. And so we thought, rather than letting lights go dark and people get injured, we'll take responsibility of the lights. But now that we are, because it's just more practical, like realizing that the lights actually don't need to be replaced. I'm not really sure how this happened, but it's just more cost effective to just sort of patch up the mortar and the electrical is already working. It doesn't, but we're not taking, you know, it doesn't mean we're responsible to repair the walls and other, or, you know, rent. It's not, it's not a precedent that requires us to.
So I actually think that's important and to frame that, spell that out, right? Obviously, we want lights because it's a safety measure. So really what you're saying is we were looking at tax dollars and it was, we were better stored with tax dollars if we, if we fixed what was currently there versus what the standard borough rates would be.
Right.
So therefore, it's not a policy, rather, we were just beautiful from a, from a, yes.
Okay. I don't know if we need to put that in a letter and provide it to the residents or if we're comfortable that stating it here in the public record is enough, but.
Well, given, given that they, given that they were giving up. Or given, given that they, given that they were getting upset at our prior proposal, I think we should communicate it to them, that's our current decision, is going to be to fix what's there.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I, I think that's what they want. I believe that's what the residents want, so I think it should work out fine.
Okay.
And we did receive, actually, a contribution from, at least one Hanson Court resident towards supporting the lights.
We did from three, actually, but I'm not to follow up with them, because the contribution was originally solicited for the purpose of doing the replacement, so I'll have to see if they still would want to put that contribution toward repair instead, see if that'll work out.
Thank you. We do, you are going to be bringing to us, Samantha, at one point, a budget, a budget adjustment for this, the acquisition of snow equipment this year, right? But I don't think we're doing it now.
On, it's on June 16th.
So that will be coming due to, but we did get a pretty comprehensive briefing from our public boards director, and I'm sure we'll discuss it again, and he's really done a lot of research into what equipment is most cost-effective and what's necessary. He has reached out, talked to the EAC about the possibility of moving away from the gas-powered sidewalk for him, and the EAC agrees and feels that there is no alternative that would accomplish our purposes at this time to a gas-powered one. We also talked about the bridge construction inspector. We have to have a third-party inspector, as we know, on the road far to do that, because it's federally funded. So what we did at our meeting is, we just approved the, I guess, it sort of, we have to approve it in advertisement because it has to go out to bid. It's pretty much boilerplate, we really don't have a lot of discretion about this. There was one area where we had discretion, we were allowed to sort of wait for different categories, which is the sort of standard boilerplate, it was like, specific experience, general construction experience, quality control, and commitment to timely completion of projects. So we bumped up the last one, because that was only 15% weighted, we were like, no, timely completion is very important to all of us, and that is pretty much all that we did at our meeting.
That's all, okay. Thank you. Finance Administration.
Thanks, everybody has access to the borough treasury report, and I just want to underscore one point that we discussed, was with the police pension investment update. We did lose seven and a half percent in March due to stock market trends, like everybody else who, you know, held their breath and opened up their 401s. Samantha's keeping a really close contact, and we'll evaluate if our contribution needs change in the future, potentially in 2024 if the market doesn't recover, but FNA is confident that this is on Samantha's radar, she's going to keep us updated as soon as we can. Anything to add to that?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay, hop in if you do. Samantha also brought us an estimate for $22,000 for the office reception area, and we discussed moving beyond the bid threshold, unofficial, to a more reasonable price. We saw a drawing presented in the packet that wasn't as clear to all of us, but we really articulated through FNA, a design for the office reception area. And just for some context and background, remember, there were some concerns with insurance and safety issues, that we wanted to, of course, meet those benchmarks for safety, but we didn't want a design that didn't reflect our communication policy approach, and we want to be very careful that we don't see a project design where there's that transactional approach to government, because we've gone so far that we don't want to move our built environment back to a communication policy practice that isn't reflective of us in 2022. So we are confident with the manager, I'm just taking a look at that, and will bring us something, the revised budget and what that communication approach and I.
Yeah, that's fair.
Okay. We also discussed a meeting recording policy. There was a desire that all public meetings be recorded, commissions, committees, et cetera. It is the recommendation that we have a computer dedicated for the AL, and that there's a one-page instruction guide, so the expectation is that no borough staff or elected official in Texas to go to every meeting, but rather committees and commissions have that computer, they have the AL, they have the one-page tutorial. This is a cost estimate for the security in the computer of about $500, and FNA unanimously approved that. We would need to do a public meeting policy to be resolved, to kind of codify that public meeting policy. We also asked them, what will we do with the recorded meetings? And that is something that could be saved on SharePoint and then linked from our webpage, so that all house, not on the NCA YouTube, but rather really directly on our SharePoint site. So I guess, I mean, we're not voting on this now, but I guess we can talk about, is there, is there any, any suggestions?
I assume that won't pose any problems for our storage. Okay.
Okay, that's okay, then, we'll.
Yep.
And we'll go to the details with office and staff, and while I can connect with Walco to talk about a resolution.
Yeah, and I already gave a heads up on it, but definitely feel free to reach out.
Okay, perfect. The next is, and this was brought to our attention, the good old Huxter permit, and how we do special event policies. You know, we are a town of beloved community-organized events, and we don't want to squash that with bureaucracy, and yet we want to find a sweet spot in the middle where we can both protect the borough and yet encourage and support community members on doing these sort of events. So what we, we really agreed is that the Huxter permit does not apply to all special events, right? So for example, birth day, if you are selling plants, for example, in our little plant exchange, you wouldn't apply for a Huxter permit for one-off, non-civic association or a dividend. But what this really led us to, this can of worms, is that we really need to look at a resolution that outlines, let's say, when a permit is appropriate, when your business privilege tax would be triggered, you know, so for example, the Girl Scouts, if they sell cookies at the skate park, we're not going to say, well, did you register for your business privilege tax and pay 1% on the $13? But we need to just resolve that. We need to organize what is a special event policy process. In the last six weeks, the office has been overwhelmed with events that have not happened, actually during the manager's time here, but, you know, the world kind of reopened and all these events were on the calendar, and it was like throwing balls at the office, and then remembering, oh, Samantha hasn't been here for any of these, so none of these were even on her radar. And we have a lot going on. So the office is really going to look at, what is a special event policy process? Now, we have enough, and have enough volunteers now, that we need to look at a permit process, we're going to need organs for that. How many people? There's a minimum, you know, so you have a barbecue, barbecue with 20 people, well, that's not a special event that would trigger this process, but we need to think about, what are those numbers? 250 people? Probably. What's the context for the event? What are the resources needed? You know, so when, whether the business association, or the fireworks, the scavenger hunt, let's say, okay, through the checklist, police are needed, public works are needed, et cetera. And we also need to keep track of how many hours, I mean, we do give the in-kind donations of having these resources, I think we should just have a record of that, and, and assure that events are doing due diligence, but that we also, once approved, we would suggest the proof of liability insurance, we register for the borough as well, and a central webpage event calendar that's accessible for everyone with that permit process available. I don't think that that's anything that we as council need to workshop, we would have to, to give an ordinance for the process, but we really should hand this over to the office and the staff to say what makes sense for them, since I could be the one who's doing it.
But I, yeah, no, I mean, it's really great to see all the events coming back here, and I'm really bought in, I mean, it's definitely, you know, part of why I wanted to be here and work here, you know, but it just, when people talk about what I have meetings with people about these events, and so, how are we going to do this? Like, oh, we'll just do it how we did it before the pandemic, I'm like, okay, I don't know what that means, can you please actually tell me how you're going to do it? And, and people have been pretty good, and people have good intentions, it's just really this process, like, help the borough, help the people in our community who want to make these things happen.
Absolutely, and a huge shout out to Samantha, please, public workers, they worked it with a few weeks' notice on two major events that was not on their radar, and again, we just assumed, well, everyone knows that this happens, when in fact, everyone doesn't know, especially if you have a city borough, and they hustled and made it happen, and thank you for that.
Yeah, definitely.
And that's all we talked about, the interim proposal deadline.
Okay. Public health and safety.
Okay, so at our last meeting, we met with the shade tree commission, and we talked about the permit for removing a shade tree in the right of way, and that has been drafted by the staff and shared with shade tree, and I think we'll, you know, we'll probably see that soon. So that's, that's in, in the process, and we have ongoing traffic concerns, we keep a list in the committee, so when we hear of traffic complaints, they are routed, you know, to us, so we'll be returning to that list. Our next meeting is tomorrow morning at 8:00, so we'll be discussing that. We have reestablished connections with the fire company, you know, so that we have a regular member attending our meeting, or one of our members attending their meeting. This is something we were not able to do regularly during the pandemic earlier because of schedule conflicts, and I think our new meeting time makes it more possible. So Phil Henderson was in attendance, and we discussed with him a concern that was raised about open burning regulations, and so we had a discussion, I think we'll return to that again at our next meeting. And then there, there are a number of kind of TAC agenda items, and I'm going to be meeting with the EAC and our manager in a week or so, so that we can coordinate the work. I mean, one of the pieces is the stormwater ordinance needs to be, I guess, revised by September, so that's very much on our radar, and we're looking to, at our meeting next week, kind of coordinate the work over the summer, so that we can have time for the EAC to review. And then we also are hoping over the summer, partly because many of our members are academics, we're hoping that we can really take advantage of the summer to kind of prepare for the green fund project, which is something that our manager very bravely has taken on, and we're very excited about, that it could be part of the next budget process for 2023. So we were just going to, we just want to plan our summertime to prepare for that. There's also progress being made by the manager on EV chargers in residential neighborhoods. Samantha, you may be able to update us tomorrow in the meeting. Yeah, I think that'll be a good update tomorrow, and that's something that once, you know, once it's ready, and kind of all the numbers are finalized, it'll then come to borough council for final approval.
Talking about regulations or purchasing new charges?
Yeah, purchasing. New charging stations that are, that could, you know, be part of a PECO pilot in residential neighborhoods.
Excited.
So that's it, so we meet at 8:00 in the morning.
All right. Next round. Parking.
Parking. Okay, so if you all recall at our May business meeting, we voted to advertise the municipal lot parking and towing ordinance, so that'll be coming for us at our June 16th meeting to approve or not, as the case may be. So anyway, that's coming, an action item coming out of our committee. Park Mobile is going to be coming to us soon, so you'll have to look out for that announcement. We're continuing our discussions of feedback that we received from council on residential parking at our May 5th meeting, and we're expecting to complete our discussions of that, and the changes that we want to recommend in time to provide an update at the January 21st, January, sorry, July 21st meeting of council. So that's where we're working towards that deadline. And our next meeting is June 14th at 8:00 AM.
Funny, me and Cher, I actually now have a tentative Park Mobile date.
Oh, dude, okay.
So June 10th, it looks like we will go live for Park Mobile.
Yeah. That is exciting.
All the, all the backend programming work that's done, me and Michelle Kierl had a training with them on how to use the backend system. It's a little, it's just, you know, our public works, you know, if there are other obligations, they just need next week to put all the signage and stickers up, and they'll be ready to go.
Who has to use quarters? She does. Still uses quarters.
However, there are people who are very excited, we hear about it.
I hear about it all the time.
All right, great. Is that a perfect?
That's it.
All right. That's it for committee reports. Are there any announcements for the good of council? I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
You didn't have this, all right.